And it's six o'clock, so let's get started.
There you go.
All right, I'm gonna call this meeting of the ordinance committee together, December 22nd, 6:00 PM, all present, and I noticed that we do have minutes to approve, so.
Yes, we should have minutes, it should be 11 to, let me see, there's, because there's the, there's the ones from the last time.
Yes, so if you give me the dates, then maybe Tom can give us a motion.
Yes, I have them, hold on, I need to get another screen, so 11 to 11:11, and I think, was it 11:25, I believe?
The ones you just said?
Yeah, those were 11:25.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve those minutes.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, and let's go with Tom Peak.
Hi.
Owen Zaret.
Hi.
And I as well, so motion passes, so thanks for that, and now we have public speak time, so we have one person from the public, so actually, wait, here comes Omar, so let me see if he wants to say anything, but if anybody from the public would like to speak to a subject that is not on our agenda, then please feel free to unmute and just let us know your name and address and what you'd like to say. Okay, well, and you know, I think I can be flexible, so if something strikes any of our attendees later, I can always reopen that, so, so, let's take a look at our agenda, so, um, the couple of things here, and I think that, you know, before we get into the meaty stuff, I just, you know, so Owen, I want to catch you up on what happened at the joint public hearing with the planning board, so it, we discussed the changing the time from 10:00 AM to 8:00 AM, the planning board voted to approve that, to send it to us, with one dissenting opinion, you know, and so that was basically that, and.
What was the dissention, I mean, is it?
It was Brenda Salier was, just felt like that they were open too much anyway, I guess, was the feeling I got.
If I remember correctly, I think what her thing was that she was sensitive to, I'm gonna do my best to state this, even though I don't 100% agree with it, but like, to, I'm gonna try and do justice to her argument, was that, you know, when we initially set that time, it was concession to some folks who had concerns, you know, around how that would interact with the traffic with the schools, and that we should sort of honor that, you know, original concession, and I think sort of the point that I made, you know, and I, I get, I get her point, the point that I sort of made was that, or and that a couple other people made is that, we haven't really observed the sort of like huge lines or overflowing, you know, visitation, really, at any point in the day that there was some concern about, and that concern, if I recall, you guys were on ordinance, I wasn't at the time, but that sort of concern of the idea that there would be like floods of people and these enormous lines and whatnot, I think was really dominant in a lot of these conversations, and having not really observed a lot of that, you know, my feeling was, okay, well, we'd probably be okay, you know, I don't think that there'd be any, any great concern of like, it, like, a noticeable increase in car traffic, for example, related to these facilities, so that was sort of, my thought is, I couldn't think of like, a really good, given what we've observed, I couldn't think of a really good reason to keep them from opening a little bit earlier if they wanted to.
Right, and I think the other thing that she presented was, you know, kind of a chart of when the dispensaries in the area were open and when they closed, but what, and so, and that really was representative of, you know, them opening more between 9:00 and 10:00, the INSA opens at 8:00, but, you know, what it wasn't representative of, was the hours that they're actually allowed to be open, because a lot of them are allowed to be open at 8:00, they just choose to open later, and so, and I think Tom did a good job kind of representing, and there was one, you know, one member of the public spoke in, against it as well, basically saying that, you know, people are gonna be smoking weed at 8:00 AM, and, you know, potentially driving with buses and whatnot, I think that was the gist of the comment that was presented, which, you know, I think that that can happen anyway, since people could, you know, grow it at their house and they have access to it 24/7, so, you know, yeah, Tom.
But also, for what it's worth, one of the people from, from INSA did say that they do a good deal of surveillance of their parking lot, and, and that that's not something that they've observed, really, I mean, I don't have, they didn't have any data, that was just, that was just a statement that they made, so take that for what, you know, for what you want, but that, there wasn't like this, a whole, they weren't observing a lot of people like smoking or taking edibles, I don't know how you'd observe someone taking edibles, but you know what I mean, their parking lot.
Yeah, Counselor Zaret.
Yeah, I mean, as you know, kind of in response to that kind of concern, we did have an agenda item at one point about open consumption, open container of cannabis, and I think even the chief, I probably touched base with him about this, you know, once a month or so, and I don't, I don't get the impression that, that there's been enough a preponderance of that type of behavior that we were worried about, you know, to, A, it's happening, and also B, you know, that's why that, I haven't brought that back, because it's just, it, you know, it, it doesn't seem to be happening, I haven't heard anything about, you know, you know, open use in a way that's been offensive to people, and certainly if it's happening, it's something we should know about and address, but I haven't, I haven't, I haven't witnessed it or heard about it from, you know, constituents or law enforcement.
Yeah, I haven't either, and, and it was interesting, just recently, there was an article, I believe it was either in Boston Globe or, you know, Massachusetts-based paper basically kind of outlined the concerns that people originally had and that they kind of haven't come to fruition, so, you know, I, like, for me, this is, you know, it's about, if, if our establishments feel like they need it, then I don't see a really compelling reason not to allow that, so, you know, like, we don't have the written recommendation yet, but that does not preclude us from making a recommendation ourselves, if we, if we feel like we have enough information on this, so, you know, once, and once we make our recommendation, then I can set a public hearing for this, to go to the full council, so I don't know how you guys feel about that, but I'm, I'm actually fine to move it, I feel like, you know, I, I've looked at this, the issue enough and heard enough that I feel comfortable with it, and, and yeah, Counselor Zaret.
I was just, I would make a motion to accept the verbal, the verbal recommendations of the planning board and set a public hearing on this matter, I don't have, I don't have any concerns either, and certainly should any arise, it's something we could revisit, but I haven't seen anything.
Yep, and, and so, was that in the form of a motion?
That was a motion, a motion to accept the recommendations and.
Send to the full council.
Yes.
Second that motion.
Okay, Counselor Zaret.
Hi.
Counselor Peak.
Hi.
And I as well, so motion passes, thank you, gentlemen, so now we can get on to some of the, the new stuff that we haven't really discussed yet, and Counselors there, do you, do you feel like, are you ready to talk about Indigenous Peoples' Day?
Yeah, sure, we could talk about that first, yeah, the, the, yes, are we gonna talk, sorry, I'm, I'm like, I only have one screen and I need to get a second one.
Do you need me, do you want me to share? I can share, I have all the documents ready to go, so.
Oh yeah, that would be great, yeah.
So, would you like me to share the cover letter or the resolution with the kind of ordinances?
I think the resolution says most of it, and I could always pull up, you know, there's some other documents we could certainly discuss, but I think the resolution slash ordinance speaks for itself.
Okay, so, let me, let me know if this is big enough, but I believe this is, this is what we're looking at here.
Right, right.
And, and can you guys see this okay? Do you need me to increase the size?
No, that's, that's legible.
Okay, all right, good, and so, you know, I actually, as I, as I read this, I thought it was great, I think this is, is a really, is a really well-thought-out kind of resolution, I guess, the, as I was reading through, when we got to the ordinance part, I guess that was my only question as, you know, is, are we, are we going to include all of this wordage in ordinance, are we gonna keep it, are we gonna add a section for, you know, holidays and, and just keep it like pretty simple and, and clean, and have the resolution be something that goes in conjunction with that, that, so I guess that was my first question.
Um, I think it could be, so, so to back up a little bit, I'll just say that the reason I, so, first, I wanted to just offer some thanks to the, what is it, I'm trying to, the, the UAINE, I believe it is, I'm just trying to remember the exact, sorry, give you a second, because I don't wanna.
I can, I can actually.
I think it's United American Indians of New England, I believe, so, so Madwan Monroe, who's a big advocate and activist around this, is who supplied me with pretty much the entirety of the resolution language, and so other municipalities that have done this have done it only as a resolution, and, you know, one thing that people had said to me prior to this, and has been an issue, is that, as you both know, you know, resolutions don't necessarily mean anything unless there's action associated with it, and it was important to me that we actually make this, you know, an observable holiday by actually creating some sort of holiday section within our ordinance, and actually put, make it an ordinance, so when we say that the, the curriculum needs to be taught in schools, and we need to expect some sort of, we recommend recognition by the business community that, that's stuff that's actually happening, because it is a city ordinance, you know, in discussing this abroad and locally with members of the indigenous community and other activists, you know, that was, that's been the concern, is that if we don't have teeth to this, then like, what's really the point, it's just lip service, and I agree with that, that's why, I just, that's why I recommended I put forward the language this way, so, I don't know, I mean, I think that lots of other, if you look just at other municipalities, they, they'll do their ordinances or legislative pieces, legislative language with a resolution as a preamble, so I, I would be, I'd be okay with just keeping it that way.
Okay.
But I would certainly defer to the two other members here as to what to do, and then to go back to what you said, Chairman Derby, so, it's interestingly enough, I, we don't really have, I think there's like administrative code for what holidays are observed by the city, but there's no actual, in our ordinances, it doesn't spell out what, you know, any holidays, observed holidays, and there's a few different places, and I don't know them off the top of my head right now, but I looked back in our, in our general ordinances, you know, where we could actually put like, observation of holidays, and we could, you know, A, list the one, the holidays that are observed in the city, and B, you know, kind of specify, you know, this, this specific, this specific language, so, I, I don't, because otherwise I don't know where we would put it, I mean, there is some, I'd have to go back, the kind of, I think it's Article 1 or 2 of our ordinances, is just kind of general functioning of the city, and we could plop it in there somewhere, but I don't know, like, for instance, you know, like, I know the state is, is going to be, has adopted Juneteenth as a holiday, and like, that's something we might want to, we want to do on a local level, so that might be, and that might be just a good, it might be good to kind of create a framework for, for these things, and I don't think it'd be difficult to do.
And that's what I was gonna say, I was gonna say, like, right now, there isn't a space for this, but there's no reason why we can't create that space, and, and as part of that, you know, as part of this process, this can just be the catalyst to create that, and as far as what we add to it, you know, I think that that can be an ongoing process, you know, probably with, you know, some framework of, like, what does the state recognize as, and making sure that all of those are in there, and then saying, what else do we want to recognize as a city, and, and so I think that that's something that we can do, I would say that my only, because I agree with everything that is stated here, like, I agree that I want the schools to do this, which I think they do in some respect, I don't know how enforced it is necessarily, but, you know, but for example, like, encouraging businesses and organizations to recognize and observe, that, that gets a little, that wording's a little nebulous as it relates to an ordinance, because it's, you know, it's, it's kind of like the, the may and shall debate, but, you know, it's not, it, it doesn't really, it's not under our purview necessarily, and it's hard to enforce, and, so I think that that's a piece that we're gonna have to kind of like, square, as we, as we move through this process.
Yeah, so you wonder if we, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, 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 please, please.
I wonder, yeah, that's a good point, so, I mean, do we, do we kind of like reconcile the more kind of legislate, firm legislative language within the actual ordinance part, and things like encouraging businesses, put that back within the resolution somewhere?
That's kind of what I was thinking.
That, that's exactly what I was thinking, and I was also thinking that as part of the introduction to this, that we, we, you know, put in the public record, you know, what our intent, the intent of the, of the law, you know, a lot of times intent is debated, and so, you know, I think it's important for us as we bring it forward to make sure that the intent is clear, and, and so there's no kind of ambiguous nature of what we were trying to accomplish when we did this.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree, and then, I guess, are you, do you agree with the concept of making this into an ordinance, or would you prefer that this all just be a resolution?
No, no, I absolutely agree that, and, and I, and I think it's important for us to add a section to the general ordinances for observed holidays, and, and here's the reasoning, we have sections of our, of our ordinance where we refer to holidays, for example, like parking, you know, except the weekends and holidays, we don't have those defined anywhere, literally nowhere are they defined, and we have those on signs around town, I mean, granted, that's not a reason to do this, because those signs are gonna be going away probably, but I think it does make sense for us to have, you know, a codified section of our, you know, that says what holidays the city observes, I think that makes sense, Counselor Zaret.
So, would it be okay with you then, that, that's a good point, I can't remember, I know that either in an email or in my cover letter, I talked about where this could go, and I can't remember, but, so.
It was the cover letter.
Cover letter, so what I could do, if it, if it so pleases this committee, is I could, I could look at the, I could propose basically new business, but basically additional business in regards to this, at the next council meeting, and just submit that language, so that's in the public record, with basically, you know, an amendment to our ordinance that includes holidays, and I'll, I can, so, and I could just list the ones that are observed generally, and would that, would that work?
That'd be perfect, and, and I can tell you exactly, so, in the cover letter, Chapter 2, Article 1 in general, to create an art, new article, 6, City Holidays.
Oh, okay.
So that's already in the cover letter, so I actually, so since it's in the cover letter that we submitted, I don't know if we need to resubmit it, I think that we can, because that was in the cover letter of what we sent to, to the committee, I think we're good.
Okay, that's good, I just can't remember what I did, you know.
Very thorough, very thorough.
Things kind of like go in and come out, you know, so.
Yes, if you want, I can, I can, I can show you that page, I think I'm, I can share like multiple things, I think, but here, there it is, right there, so I highlighted it.
Oh, okay, perfect.
So, you know, I, I think that that's probably the direction we should take probably for our next meeting, if we come in, and, and I think probably the way to do it is to just take the list of holidays that the state is currently, you know, acknowledges, and for us to put those in there along with Indigenous Peoples' Day, and, and then as, maybe as the, the ordinance review kind of happens, if, if people are feeling like there's, there's holidays, I mean, Juneteenth, I think, is a, is a really important one that, for us to recognize, so I'd like to see that in there, but if the state is already gonna do that, then I guess that's moot, you know, but, and I think that maybe, so Tom, you know, this could be a good opportunity as we kind of hone this in, once the ordinance review committee gets going, that we can see if there were, if there's any glaring ones that we're missing as we propose it.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, perfect, all right, that sounds great, and other than that, I mean, I think the, the resolution is awesome, I, you know, I can't, I can't see any, you know, as I look at this, I, I think that all of these points are really important, and I think it's well, it's well-written, I think, you know, the, as we, as we kind of move some of these lower ones into the resolution, I think that is gonna, if we, if we, you know, I don't think we need to be super verbose as we acknowledge a holiday in that section of the ordinances, but I think that our intent needs to be, you know, well-understood and clear.
Is that?
Yeah, I'm just typing really quickly.
That's cool, okay.
I agree with everything, sorry.
Go for it, Tom, go for it.
I agree with everything that's being said, but, and, and I like how this is moving along, there's just one thing I want to just flag as a topic for discussion, and that is Article 6, the part of around East Hampton Public Schools, I have no problem with this, but this is the first time in my city council tenure that I've seen us by ordinance just state anything about the, just the public school curriculum, and I'm curious, like, whether the plan, or whether the school committee would feel that that's sort of wandering into their jurisdiction at all, and e- even if they were to feel that way, I'm sure we could find some cooperative folks on the school committee who'd be interested in maybe doing something in tandem, I'm just curious if you had spoken to them, and if there was a sense that that was gonna be, I know that Owen, you're pretty thorough with this stuff, so you might have, you might be way ahead of me, I just wanted to bring it up.
Counselor Zaret.
Yeah, so what I wanted to do was, I did kind of have some very like, brief discussions around this, informally, and what I, I just wanted to get consensus, and if, and if you agreed with that concept, then I wanted to, because what I was actually kind of hoping is somehow, we could do this in parallel with the school committee, so that they basically accept the ordinance, so, I just wanted to get, I just wanted to find out what the members here thought, and then bring that forward to them.
Yeah, I think that, that makes sense, I, so there's a couple of things, as we go forward, that I think we can consider, so, number one, if we, if we pull that part into the, into the resolution, then it's not necessarily us mandating that, through ordinance that they do that, and number two, I think that they're doing it already, so that might be a good thing, but, but that is something that's important to verify and to make sure as we kind of move forward here, so, good point, Counselor Peak, because, yeah, we, it's not very common that we legislate what the school does at the ordinance level, so, Counselor Zaret.
I mean, do you want to talk about, or, or now, or to future date, about kind of what we pull, what we keep in the actual ordinance piece, and what we pull back into the resolution?
You know, I, I feel like, you know, we could definitely have some discussion around that now, if, if that so pleases.
And then, and then the other thing is, I wanted to, you know, part of the importance of this is indigenous voices kind of leading the discussion, and obviously, you yourself, Counselor Derby, wrote a great letter, and based on your heritage, there, there's people that, both advocates and indigenous representatives, who I think would want to attend one of our meetings, and maybe we could set a date in the future, so that I can give people plenty of notice, just so that we could have some of those people come and at least speak to this, some of the people who are included, and if that would be possible.
That is absolutely possible, and so I'm happy to do that, I'm happy to look at a date, and, and in fact, the, the good news is, I was just a new, for the, my tribe, the Wampanoagah Quinna, we just got a new kind of Facebook group that just started, so I should be able to get some folks from my tribe as well to chime in on this, and, because that's a different way to connect that we didn't have before, so, and I, and I would love to have as many indigenous voices as we can get, obviously, we're gonna be looking into the new year, I mean, our, I think our, our regular meeting is the, the 2nd and 4th Tuesday, does that still work? Do we want to look at like, the 12th of January?
Uh, let me see here.
I don't see why that wouldn't work.
Um, I'm just thinking, I might wanna, yeah, I could give people, yeah, let me just.
Done enough time?
I think so.
And if not, we could always go to the 4th, the 4th.
February?
Or the 4th Tuesday.
For 26th.
The 26th.
That might be better, that way I could line people up, I just, and, and it's, it's tough, I've had a lot of email correspondence with a variety of people in the indigenous community, obviously, the, the individual who crafted a lot of this language, but it's definitely, and I actually just got a really nice email, actually, from Rhonda Aronson, who is, sorry, I'm moving screens around a lot, so, I just wanted to share, actually just quickly share this with you, sorry.
That's fine.
Oh, wait. There we do, yeah, I just wanted to share this with you actually really quickly, just kind of as a, as a.
Do you want to share your screen?
Uh, no, I'll just read this.
Okay.
Dear Mr. Zaret, as the Western Massachusetts Commissioner on Indian Affairs, I would like to extend my support and gratitude to the City of East Hampton for the consideration of making the much-needed change from Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day, I am willing to support your endeavors to make the change in recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day through letters of support or speaking to this important issue, cause, the change represents the recognition of the indigenous people that continue to thrive on this continent despite centuries of intentional genocide, intentional cultural genocide, we certainly do not need to be observing a holiday that celebrates a man who brought colonization, slave trade, genocide, and the erasure of the accurate histories of indigenous people, I applaud every city, town, school system that chooses the right side of history by taking the step, thank you for considering this change inclusive of all residents, Rhonda Anderson, Western Massachusetts Commissioner on Indian Affairs, and founder and co-founder of Okito Cultural Center, so.
Right.
I can, I should probably submit, I'll send this to the clerk, and this would be one of the people, including, also Madwan Monroe, if I can get them to attend that meeting, and Heather Leval, who is, I don't believe is indigenous, but she is one of the members of Italians for Indigenous Peoples' Day, because as you know, there is, you know, within the Italian community, so, I will try to line up as many people as I can for that, that date, the 26th, if that works for, for you.
Sounds great.
Okay.
Yeah, perfect, and, and, you know, if you want to take a look at, so, the, you know, one of the, there's a little bit of a formatting thing, we started with number two here.
Oh, was one the beginning of?
Oh, maybe that, no, that's what it is, yeah, so, I, that confused me when we finished the, and, and there's no, so it here be resolved either, piece to this, which normally in a resolution.
Yeah, so, I agree, so maybe two, two could actually maybe, yeah, I mean, it's, right, so, and, because I think what I did was, I changed some of the actual, be resolved into the actual language.
Into the language, right.
Yeah, so, so.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I keep.
That's my fault.
I've been talking out of order a lot today, I apologize.
That was, that was me, that one was me.
Uh, we could, we could make number two, the city council resolves to accept the preamble.
the preamble. Uh, oh, well, there, there, I did include resolves.
Oh, and resolves to create. Yep. Okay. Good. And so, you know, I, I think what we should try to do is figure out exactly, because if we're gonna, which I think that, I think is the, probably the best course of action, if we're gonna create that section of the ordinance that has all of the holidays, we probably don't, I mean, if, like, are we gonna add, you know, wordage to each holiday saying what that holiday represents? I don't, I, I, we could, I don't know if it's necessary. So, and that's, that's where I was thinking like, this resolution could be where we really kind of lay our case and, and say what our expectations are. And then within that ordinance, it would just be very simple. It would just be creating that section and a list of, of, of dates or, you know, and, and names of holidays that we celebrate. And I, but I don't know if that waters this down too much. You know, so if we need to rethink that kind of strategy, I'm, I'm open to that. I'm, I'm just trying to think of like, what is going to make sense within the ordinances? You know, so I'm, I'm open to hear all interpretations of this. Yes, Counselor Zaret.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. Like, if within the ordinance, we just say that here are the holidays we celebrate, you know, New Year's Day, Christmas Day, blah, 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 Indigenous Peoples' Day, like, that's, that's.
No Columbus Day, just Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Right, like, it's just, they're just all listed there. And then you do this resolution. And it's just separate, it's just part of that whole process of acceptance. My only thought is that does go back a little bit to like, well, what teeth does this have? But I guess it does in so much that that's what we're celebrating.
Right. That's the official, that's the official pol- uh, the official policy, I guess, of the city. Would be that Indigenous Peoples' Day is what's celebrated on October or whatever, October 8th or the, whatever. Whatever day it is after.
Right, the first, yeah.
The first Tuesday after the first of the month.
Yeah, Monday, second Monday.
Second Monday, that's what it is. Yeah, good, well, and here's the thing, like, uh, and, and the only reason why I'm kind of putting that out there is because as far as teeth goes, you know, there's no, there's actually no teeth within the ordinance. Like, there's, there's, there's no, like, if we kept this as the ordinance, there's no, like, punitive piece. Like, if you don't do this, then you're gonna be fined, you know, 25 shillings. But we don't have that. It's more of kind of like, we, this is what we want you to, to do. But there's, you know, uh, but which, which, I'm, I, I guess I, I don't need to minimize that because I feel like it's important to, to state those things. You know, that we do want, you know, people in the community to, to understand the reasoning for this and, and why this is important. I just don't, like, as an ordinance, it'll, it'll be unenforceable. I guess.
Yeah, that's true. Right. So what, what exactly are you gonna do? Right. Who's, is, is, yeah, are you gonna either call the police or some sort of other agency within the city to enforce it if it's not being followed?
Right.
Yeah, you make a good point. So, uh, we could change it back to kind of resolve as follows, and then just basically those say that create a section within the ordinance where this is a holiday we observe.
Yep. I, I think that probably would make, be the, the easiest way to do it and the most like, well, you know, so the, the lawyer doesn't get mad at us. Because if we create this into an ordinance, that, that might cost us some money to try to figure out precedent on that one. But I, I totally worthwhile, uh, as far as like the, the content. And so why don't, I mean, and you know, why don't we, do you want to just take another crack at, and, and at rekind of wording it and, and maybe we can pick this up when we come back on the, on the 20, what did I say? It's already lost, 27th, I think it was? 26th, 26th, Tuesday the 26th. Does that seem like a, a good plan? So when we have all those visitors, we can have a really, uh, well-formed resol- like, resolution with a very clear, we're adding this section to the ordinances where Indigenous Peoples' Day is what we observe at, at this date. All right. Any other thoughts on this one? Counselor Zaret, I do appreciate all the work you put into this, and I also appreciate you reaching out to as many people as you have. So thanks for that.
Oh, well, thank you. I mean, you're one of the voices that we need leading this, so, uh, thank you.
And I'm gonna keep reaching out. Hopefully someone will come back to me at some point.
It's been frustrating. I mean, I just, just to let you know, I mean, just full transparency, like I, I've had a long conversation with Representative Sabadosa, who's been really involved with this on the state level, and I think it's just a tough time for everyone. A lot of the tribes are all volunteer. Um, and everyone's got their own, their other stuff going on. So, you know, I've gotten a lot of response on social media. I'm a member of a couple groups on Facebook that support these kinds of endeavors and everyone's completely positive about it. And I keep saying, please send me emails. And I'm not receiving them and I don't, I don't think that means that there's lack of support, so.
And, and I can say, you know, as the correspondence that I've had with my tribe, um, you know, on the, it's a very small reservation, but they're, they're in a really, they're pushed to their maximum capacity trying to navigate all of the federal things around COVID and, and support for Native American tribes. And I, and, and just the correspondence I've been getting, you can tell that they are just maxed out. So, um, you know, I, I think that's a, another thing that we have to add to the, the whole, um, dynamic here. So anyway, but, um, so we'll bring this, we'll pick this up on the 26th. I, I think, I think this is a good, a good start. I think, I think we're, I think this is a good tact for us to be able to do this. So, yeah, this is great. Now, do you mind if we move on to the next one?
No, at your pleasure.
Oh, okay. So, that, that means, and this one I'm pretty excited about as well. And so let's take a look at this. And this is, it's so, I, you know what I love about this? I love, it's so very simple. You know, like, as, as far as ordinances go, they can get very long and complicated and really like drawn out. So, you know, a- and I think that this one is, is a really, it's a, it's creative and it's not something I don't think a lot of cities have started working on yet, but I think it's important as we grow. This is an important one, especially now that we enacted the PACE program. Uh, this really complements it, so. You want to give us a jump into this one, Counselor Zaret?
Yeah, absolutely. So, I mean, this is something, you know, certainly I know that initiatives that you've been working on for a while, Counsel Derby, and this came up a little bit in our discussion with cannabis because of, you know, uh, energy draw. And, you know, I think that in the interest of being a green city, reducing our carbon footprint and, and being sustainable, you know, we, we need to do better. Instead of just asking, oh, you know, golly gee, could you please put solar on your new building? We should just make that a requirement. And there's nothing really foreign about this in the sense that there, uh, so just, you know, in full transparency, you know, I think I included my cover letter, like, I got this from, I think, Somerville. I'm not, I can't remember who, but.
I have the, I can take a look. It's Watertown.
A Watertown. So, and I looked it over and it, there wasn't really anything onerous about it. I mean, if you're, I think that it's reasonable to say if you're gonna build, you know, industrial, commercial building or multi, some sort of, uh, multifamily, multi-tenant unit in, um, oh, and actually, yeah, of a certain size, I included that in there too. You know, you, you should be responsible with the, the energy footprint you're creating. And so I thought their language was really on the nose. I didn't really change too much. There might be something I changed, but I really don't remember what it was because it was a few months ago and I can't remember what I did yesterday sometimes, so. I really, I agree with you. I appreciate the simplicity of their language and there was something I added in, but I really don't remember what it was. It might have been.
As well as a 12.9, because to refer to our ordinance.
I might have.
Our zoning.
Yeah, I might have, uh, that might be wrong. I might have looked that up though. I can't remember. That's actually, that might be a wrong number.
Well, we do have site plan review, uh, uh, section in the, in the zoning ordinance.
So it might be right. I can't remember though.
Well, that's, we'll just have to double check that. But again, uh, sorry to interrupt. I can't, maybe you guys can remember, because I can't remember what I did yesterday. I can't remember if I sent this to the planning board when we accepted it. So I might have to resend this to our committee and to the planning board in order to trigger the joint public hearing that we're gonna have, have to have on this, since this is zoning change. Which is, and, and, and which is great. I, I really enjoy working with the planning board. It's great having another set of eyes and ideas. I feel like, you know, they help. You know, it's a whole nother vetting process, which is really good, and they might think of things that we haven't thought of. So, um, but I, what I'll do is our first meeting in January, I'll make sure that I have done that. Uh, and I'll, I'll email Jeff tonight just to make sure it's on his radar as well.
Yeah, I'll, I'll double check that section. I can't remember if I looked that up or not. I, I thought I, because I, I definitely made sure that I included the, the appropriate zone, uh, designations for our city. I don't remember 12.9. I don't know. I'll, I'll look that up.
Okay. Yeah, um, and I don't know, Tom, if you have any thoughts?
I only thought, um, it's, it's really, um, I like it. Uh, I like the idea. Uh, it's a bit technical, so I'd like to have, um, some technical folks weigh in and say that they like this and that it, it fits with what they're doing. But I, I really like the, the principle of it. And I think that the planning board, uh, is a good place to have those sort of technical discussions, so. I have no objection to just getting, uh, getting, you know, the wheels, uh, turning and, uh, getting that public, uh, hearing scheduled with the planning board and then, uh, sort of just taking it from there.
Sounds good. Counselor Zaret.
I did do my homework and I put the right section in for site plan approval.
Good job. All right, that's the second, second good job you got tonight.
I always get worried when I, uh, you know, when I borrow our good language from other municipalities, if I forget things like this and you know, if I accidentally leave the other city's name and instead of East Hampton, but I actually.
You missed one.
So I did look it up.
Oh, good stuff. All right, that's great. So, um, so my, my obligation to this is I'll make sure that we get that, uh, joint public hearing process started and, and, uh, let Jeff know that we're ready for that. And, um, you know, uh, if I haven't done that yet, which I might have, and, um, if I did, then good job to me, but who knows? Because I can't remember. Then I, I'll make sure that we, we get that, um, scheduled. Yeah, Counselor Zaret.
The only thing I'm thinking of, I had talked to, um, the energy, is it the energy committee? I had mentioned this to them, but I hadn't really gotten it to them. And most of that has to just do with the complexities of these conversations in the pandemic.
Well, and they also don't have city emails yet.
Someone should submit a, a request for that.
Hopefully it wouldn't get all bogged down and.
Maybe we could just send this to them and they can always show up to our public hearing for comment. Maybe that's the easiest way.
I think that's probably the easiest way to do it.
Okay, I'll, I'll send it to the chair, but.
Awesome. Great. Um, I mean, so that, you know, unless, unless you guys want to, you know, work on the engine brake thing, I, I think we're in a pretty good place right now.
Can I just ask one question about the engine brake thing?
Sure.
Has there been any, um, I, because I think the last time we were talking, we were saying that we, we wanted to circle back with the police department and see if there had been any change since a year ago. Uh, has there been any, any progress on that?
No progress yet, but that is, that's the, that's the one piece that is, uh, that's missing before we wrap it up. So it's on my, it's on my radar.
Great.
Yep. Counselor's there.
And yeah, and again, as someone who lives in one of the area, um, or, or the street that I think initiated this discussion, I think it really comes down to two-ish. So one is that from an enforcement perspective, I don't think there, there'd be ever any way to prove that someone was using engine brakes, right?
Right.
So, it's really that trucks drive too fast in certain places in the city and sometimes they make a lot of noise. So, the first part, we could definitely address with just identifying those areas and just requesting more enforcement from the police. The noise, I don't know what to do about that, although didn't, um, I'm forgetting his name now, the sergeant who came to speak with us.
Ross?
Sergeant Ross, did he say that there were, that there were some options around enforcement of noisy vehicles or my?
No, he did. He, I think, and I've actually, he was out tonight, um, and doing, uh, truck enforcement. And, and I've seen him a few times. He's, he's actively out, um, inspecting trucks. So, I, because I've seen him pull over since our last meeting, uh, at least a few times. So that means he's probably out there, you know, quite often. But yeah, he did say that there was, uh, it was like modifications to the exhaust that were illegal and that he could be, and that he could find them for that. But I would love to just kind of, since he has been really active, I'd love to, so what I'll do, how about I'll invite him to our, um, our meeting in January on the 12th. And so we'll, next month we'll meet the 12th and we'll meet the 26th and I'll, I'll have him come to the meeting on the 12th. Yeah, great. Counselor's there.
Just a que- just a question, if it's, if it really mucks things up, then let me know, but are there, is there any chance, uh, and I have a feeling the answer is no, because of other committees, is there any chance of meeting on Thursdays?
I'd, I'd, listen, as far as I'm concerned, no problem. I don't, Tom, I don't know what your schedule looks like.
Well, it depends. Thursdays are not always amazing for me, but I can sometimes, the only thing is I often have rules on Thursday. And then on the Thursdays, I don't have rules. Like, we often have, um, the RCV committee.
Okay. So, uh, but Counselor's there, I, I am open to making the schedule as amenable to everybody as possible, so.
What about, um, and what happens on Wednesdays when we don't have city council?
Uh, I think finance, uh, no, they're Tuesdays. So, yeah, Wednesday would be fine with me.
I just, I have a personal commitment that makes Tuesdays a little more difficult, but I could, maybe before we make any decision, I could just uh, have a, have a conversation and just see if, um, it's, it is an issue or not. I can get back to you.
So can we, can we, um, look at the 12th or do you want to wait to do that?
Well, we tactic, uh, do we technically have a little bit of time?
We have time.
To, um.
I just wanted to, to email, um, him and just give him plenty of notice. So he could, you know, let us know if he can make it or not.
Can I, um, let you know in like the next two days? Would that, would that be okay?
Perfect.
Okay.
No problem at all.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. I mean, this, this is, you know, you know, our, our commitment to city council has increased during the pandemic. So let's be as flexible as we can with each other, right? So anyway, uh, any other thoughts before? Okay, uh, and does a- anybody from the public, I'm, I'll reopen public speak. Does anybody from the public have anything they would like to say that was not covered on the agenda? Okay, I don't hear any. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Uh, Counselor Peak. Counselor Zaret.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you for a productive meeting, gentlemen. It was always a pleasure.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays to you guys too. Enjoy.
Have a great rest of your year, if I don't see you before that.
Yeah, right. Stay safe, guys. Take care.